Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alonian Moors Premium, Montecarlo. The acronym is ADPAC and a chief judge of counsel court. Today is Class 133, Class 133. What are we learning in Class 132? Well, the thing we have to keep our mind on, right? What's the concept in concept of the last three classes? It's really been about what? The International Court of Justice. Even though we've been going over a case commonly known as France versus United States of America of 1952, we've really been talking about the ICJ. It's the ICJ that was doing what? Presiding over that case. You must never forget, this is all about the judges, right? The judges are tasked with the responsibility of trying to maintain peace and security on planet Earth. This is the reason why the International Court of Justice is considered to be the principal organ of the United Nations, charter, right? So that's what we have to understand as we take away from the class. You must never forget, this is about the ICJ. Why do I say that? Because the Moors are going to need assistance from the ICJ, right? Once we start to issue our counsel court orders and we're trying to enforce our counsel court orders, we're trying to enforce Moroccan law, we're trying to enforce Moroccan regulations, right? We're trying to maintain our territorial integrity. We're trying to protect our nationals, trying to protect our diplomats. More than likely, we're going to end up at the ICJ because the United States is going to continue to be what? A belligerent, right? They're going to be a bad actor, right? They're not going to operate in what's commonly known as good faith. That's pacta sunt servanda, right? Pacta sunt servanda is called operating in good faith, right? You can find that in the Vienna Convention on Law Treaties of 1969, Article 26, right? Pacta sunt servanda, right? That means you must do what? Maintain your agreement, whether there's treaties, conventions, or any type of arrangement, in good faith. So, you know, as the Moors start to enforce their rights, we will see if the United States will maintain their obligations to the treaties, right? And we'll talk more about that today, about the obligations of treaties of both the United States and Moroccans. But that's what the Moors have to take away from Class 132. What else do we take away from the class? Well, we learn a lot more about what? Territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction. We're learning a lot more about the territories what? It's established by your constitution. Your constitution like a deed, it sets forth what? To define territory. That's a defined territorial jurisdiction, right? For your state, that's territorial jurisdiction. Then you've got personal jurisdiction to protect who? Protect Kendrick Bay and Kendrick Johnson under what? Moroccan law, right? So in Class 132, what we learned is that the Moors need to enforce what? We need to enforce our treaties, Moroccan law, and Moroccan regulations. But what allowed us to enforce the treaty in the first place? It was the Constitution. The Constitution is the portal to get access to international law. Without a properly written Constitution and its three branches of government, and then being depolited with the United Nations in accordance with Article 102, you can't enforce treaties without a Constitution. It takes one before you get access to the other, you see? So you must understand, Moors, Class 132 is a combination of understanding territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction. You must put the two together. It's the state's responsibility to take care of its nationals and diplomats, and it's the nationals and diplomats' responsibility to take care of the state. It's yin and yang, gotta work together, right? Let's go ahead and get into the class. As the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, like I said, the Constitution operates as a deed, it operates as a will, right? It operates as a trust because it protects what? Your E state. It's the state, right? The provincial state within the empire of Morocco, right? It's just one small parcel of territory within the greater empire, right? And that's what we have to take away. We always have to understand that we as Moors have to identify the territory that we're governing over. That way, we as Moors can understand, okay, what Moors government is overseeing the territory of Utah? What Moors government is overseeing the territory of Wyoming? What Moors government is overseeing the territory of Oklahoma, et cetera? And how do we know? What is about the borders? Without the borders, how would we know who's overseeing what? You see, so this is what we have to understand as Moors. This helps us to get along and share power because we know where the borderlines are. Therefore, we can set up a government and we understand who we can put in charge of that particular territory. That's small latitude, longitude, right? So if something's going good, those Moors get what? Acquiesce for what's going on in that territory. If something's going bad, we know exactly who to pinpoint that's not doing a good job of governance in that territory. You see, and this is how you start to narrow it down. This is called what? An organized juror society, alright? Let's take it to the board. Right now, we're going over Charter of the United Nations of Chapter 14, Articles 92 through 96. It's about the International Court of Justice, right? Drop-down box. Right now, we're going over a case right from the ICJ, commonly known as France versus United States of America. It's cited as the rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco of the year 1952, right? So today, as a drop-down box, we're talking about what? The relinquishment of counsel court by the United States in 1956. Keep in mind, the United States was at the ICJ in 1952 fighting to maintain what? Counselor court. They were fighting to maintain a limited consular jurisdiction over the Moors. Keep in mind, in 1952, the ICJ awarded the United States and the United States of America with a limited consular jurisdiction over the Moors within the geographical location or what's commonly known as the United States because the United States is operating as what? As an overlay, right? As administrative power, as a colonial power over the Moors while the Moors still continue to do what? Acquiesce. So therefore, the United States was awarded a limited consular jurisdiction. What does consular mean? Counselor court. So therefore, if Moors have a dispute with the United States of America, the United States or one of their several union states or one of their American citizens, then the Moor had a right to petition counsel court in order to take what? Take an American into that counsel court. And in light manner, if an American had a dispute with a Moroccan, then that American could petition counsel court in order to bring that Moroccan into counsel court to settle any dispute. So the International Court of Justice told the United States, okay, somebody's gotta maintain the treaty. The United States, since you've still got your name on the Act of Al-Dusers, et cetera, then there must be a counsel court. So the United States said, okay, we'll accept the terms and conditions of establishing a venue to be known as a consular court, but not a competent consular court. The only way for it to be a common and consular court, Moors must be sitting there. So when the United States realized, they said, okay, well, we gotta establish a consular court according to the treaty language. The Act of Al-Dusers recognized who's supposed to be sitting in counsel court? The Moors government, i.e. Moroccans, i.e. Moors. So the United States said, okay, we'll establish a consular court. This was after 1952. But shortly thereafter, within four years, they decided to what? Relinquish counsel court. We'll talk about that today, alright? Okay, let's get into the class. So the Moors know we're going through the United Nations Charter about the ICJ, right? But what's the most important part about the ICJ? Where does the International Court of Justice derive its power? Okay, it tells you in Chapter 14, Article 92. Brother Dre, come to the top.
Chapter 14, the International Court of Justice, Article 92. The International Court of Justice shall be the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. It shall function in accordance with the annexed statute, which is based upon the statute of the Permanent Court of International Justice and forms an integral part of the present Charter.
Alright. So the ICJ derives its authority from the Charter. Therefore, there'd be no ICJ. You hear Moors talking about, we gotta take them to a world court. We gotta, we gotta take these comments to the ICJ. Okay. Where does the ICJ derive their authority? The Charter. So how can Moors talk about a world court or ICJ when you haven't taken the time to read the Charter? Before you can utilize the ICJ's provisions, which is the statutes of the International Court of Justice of 1946, first you gotta study the Charter of 1945. You gotta adhere to those 111 articles. And Article 73 talked about non-self-governing territories. It talked about the Moors or any indigenous inhabitants trying to do what? Self-govern under their self-determination. On Article 73, Section E as an echo, it talked about a Constitution may require. So if the Moors are reading Article 73 of the Charter, then how can you even sit here and talk about the ICJ? Because you must study one before the other. She must understand, if you hear Moors talking about the ICJ or the world court, you gotta ask them, have you even read the Charter yet? And the answer more than likely is what? No. You see how Moors are moving their pieces out of sequential order? It's just like chess, right? In chess, there are certain pieces on the back rank that cannot maneuver until the pawn moves first. The bishop can't move until the pawn moves first. The queen can't move until the pawn's move first. The rooks can't move more than likely until the pawn moves out the way, and then the other pieces on the back rank move out the way in order for the rook to be able to move. Some things have to be done in sequential order. And you cannot utilize the ICJ unless you understand the provisions of the Charter first because the ICJ derives its authority from the Charter, alright? Okay, let's continue. Okay, so like I said, right now, we're going over the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, right? So the United States of America and the United States and the several union states are where? In Morocco. But what's Morocco? That's the territory, right? So Morocco is the territorial dispute that we're dealing with right now. So the United States of America wants to keep saying the land is what? American. Moors know that the land is what? Morocco. Well, guess who else knows the land is Morocco? The Americans, right? Well, which Americans? The administrators, right? So when you read the Charter, Article 73, it tells you who the parties are. Article 73 says who is overseeing the colonial territory? It says who? The administrative powers or the administrative authority, Article 73. I'm not gonna go to it. You need to look it up, get in the scholarship. It tells you that America is the what? Administrative authority or administrative power overseeing the territory of Morocco because Morocco's still in what? A protector status. Because the Moors have what? Acquiesce. Who else acquiesce? The what? Moroccan government. So both the government and the Moors have acquiesced. What does acquiesce mean? It means you just tacitly agree, you did not what? Reject. You didn't set forth the properly-written instrument to show on the record that you're now removing the colonial status of the United States of America. Well, how do you do that? What's called a Declaration of Independence. A Declaration of Independence represents what? That's what? Your intent, your implied intent to do what? To emerge as a sovereign independent state. That's what the Declaration of Independence is all about. It gives people a warning. It's a declaration. You're declaring something. Then you utilize your Constitution. That's the properly-written instrument to now set forth what? The deed, the will, the trust, the E state. Because the state is in what? The empire. So it's the E state, the empire state, you see? So your provincial state is in the empire of Morocco, right? Alright, so in this case, France versus United States of America, 1952, alright? Before we start reading it, let's, since this case talks about the Act of Al-Dusers, right? Talks about the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906. Let's, let's for a moment go to the Act of Al-Dusers before we keep reading the actual judgment from the ICJ. Let's go take a look at the treaty itself. Let's refresh ourselves about what? The President Theodore Roosevelt said as to why the United States became a signatory power to the treaty in the first place. Let's see if the President actually consented and acquiesced to the treaty, right? What's the first way you know that a state has become a contracting party to the treaty? Where it's called what? The constitutional procedures, right? What's the constitutional procedure? Okay, here it is right in front of your face, alright? Good Brother Joseph, right here.
Signed at Al-Dusers, April 7, 1906. Ratification advised by the Senate, December 12, 1906. Ratified by the President of the United States, December 14, 1906. Ratification deposited with the Spanish government, December 31, 1906. Proclaimed January 22, 1907.
Alright, so this is the United States on behalf of the United States of America now becoming a signatory power to the treaty through what? Their constitutional procedure. What's the constitutional procedure? Well, first, the President signed it, right? In good faith, April 7, 1906. Then after that, it was brought back to what? The legislative branch. The legislative branch ratified it, right? Since ratification advised by the Senate, December 12, 1906. Then next what happened? Then it was sent back over to what? The executive branch. The executive branch ratified by the President of the United States, December 14, 1906. What happened next? Now you have to deposit the treaty, send it back to the origin, the way it came from, right? So look right here. Says ratification deposited with the Spanish government, December 31, 1906. Now the Moors, they said, well, why was it depolited with the Spanish government? It's because the Spanish government at that time had annexed land in the Kingdom of Morocco. So Tangier at the time, where the diplomatic body at Tangier was located. And at the time, the Spanish government was holding on to a little bit of land within the Kingdom of Morocco. So Tangier at the time was somewhat in the territory of the Spanish government, you see? Because Spain had that what? They annexed some land, alright? So when they say, well, depolited with the Spanish government, that's because the Spanish government was annexing some land in the Kingdom of Morocco. That must be understood. So that Tangier, even though it was still in Morocco, but it was still though the Spanish government had annexed some land, alright? That must be understood. Last but not least, you make it public, you make it public law. How does the President or the government make it public law? When proclaimed, January 22, 1906, became public law because the President or the government does what? They send it out to the nationals of said state. So all the American nationals were made aware that the United States had became party, signatory powers to a treaty, you see? This is called constitutional procedure, right? Okay, so that was, that was a part of it. Okay, so let's go down now and read a little bit about what the United States said, okay? Brother Dre.
By the President of the United States of America, a proclamation. Whereas a general act and an additional protocol was concluded and signed on April 7, 1906 by the Plenipotentiaries of the United States of America, Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium, Spain, France, Great Britain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, Russia, and Sweden, the originals of which general act and additional protocol, being in the French language, are word for word as follows. And whereas, the said general act and additional protocol were signed by the Plenipotentiaries of the United States of America under reservation of the following declaration. The government of the United States of America having no political interest in Morocco and no desire or purpose having animated it to take part in this conference other than to secure for all peoples the widest equality of trade and privilege with Morocco and to facilitate the institution of reforms in that country tending to ensure complete cordiality of intercourse without instability of administration within for the common good. Declares that in acquiescing in the regulations and declarations of the conference and becoming a signatory to the general act of Al-Dusers and to the additional protocol, subject to ratification according to constitutional procedure and in accepting the application of those regulations and declarations to American citizens and interests in Morocco. It does so without assuming obligation or responsibility for the enforcement thereof. And whereas in giving the advice and consent to the ratification of the said general act and additional protocol, the Senate of the United States resolved as a part of this act of ratification that the Senate understands that the participation of the United States in the Al-Dusers Conference and in the formulation and adoption of the general act and protocol, which resulted therefrom, was with the sole purpose of preserving and increasing its commerce in Morocco, the protection as to life, liberty, and property of its citizens residing or traveling therein and of aiding by its friendly offices and efforts in removing friction and controversy which seemed to menace the peace between the power signatory with the United States to the treaty of 1880, all of which are on terms of amity with this government and without purpose to depart from the traditional American foreign policy which forbids participation by the United States in the settlement of political questions which are entirely European in their scope. And whereas the said general act and additional protocol were duly ratified by the governments of the United States of America and of the other powers aforesaid and by His Majesty the Sultan of Morocco. And whereas in pursuant of Article 121 of the said general act, the ratifications of the said general act and additional protocol of all the signatory powers were deposited with the government of His Majesty, the King of Spain, on December 31, 1906, thereby constituting a valid exchange of the ratifications thereof. Now therefore be it known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, President of the United States of America, have caused the said general act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the same in every article and clause thereof may be observed and fulfilled with good faith by the United States and the citizens thereof, subject to the reservation made in the aforesaid declaration of the Plenipotentiaries of the United States and to the resolution of the Senate. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the United States of America to be hereunto affixed, done at the city of Washington this 22nd day of January in the year of our Lord 1907, and of the independence of the United States of America, the 131st. Theodore Roosevelt.
Alright, so as you can see, this is a proclamation by the President of the United States, right? Falsely saying he's the President of the United States of America. You go back and look at video footage on YouTube showing President Theodore Roosevelt clearly stating out loud that he took it over to the United States. He never said United States of America. But you know, they have to keep fooling their citizens that the United States of America still has a government. But everybody knows the United States of America is void of a central government. The United States is a federal corporation, right? Domestically and internationally, they operate as what? An international, intergovernmental organization, right? And President Theodore Roosevelt took his oath to who? The international, intergovernmental organization, i.e. the federal corporation. But they still have to keep putting up this facade like they're still the government of the United States of America, and that's just not true, right? But getting back to point, what's the most important part of it? Right here, this last paragraph is very important. Not only has the President talked about the fact that the United States has consented and acquiesced to the terms and conditions of the treaty, right? But it also says right here, it says, now therefore be it known that I, Theodore Roosevelt, President of the United States of America, have called the said general act and additional protocol to be made public to the end that the same in every article and every clause thereof may be observed and fulfilled with good faith, right? There's a good faith by the United States and the citizens thereof, you see? So not only is the treaty binding, it's binding against the United States of America, it's binding against the United States, and it's binding against all the American citizens. This is the President saying this out now. But what about the Act of Al-Dusers that's so important? Is that it's what? It's what? In the preface, it's what? It's the triple principle. Sovereignty and independence. The empire is sovereign and independent. It's the parent state, right? And the treaty also recognizes who is the head of state? The Sultan. But also, the Act of Al-Dusers recognized who was running the government though? The Moorish government, i.e. the Moors. So President Roosevelt, sitting here, he consented, acquiesced, agreed, and they agreed through what? A constitutional procedure. They ratified, right? They deposited, and they promulgated the treaty. It's in full force and effect. Now it becomes what? Peripery, right? It becomes just cogent because within the treaty itself, it recognized the Moors as being the government. And the Moors themselves are who? Human beings. So again, the Moors as a group of people natives to the empire of Morocco, the right, the peripery right to have the sovereign authority over the empire of Morocco. You see, along with who? The Sultan. So these are peripery norms, just cogent, there can be no derogation. In the United States, not only the President put out a proclamation, also the legislative branch of the United States Senate consented and ratified and agreed. So now, remembering Class 132, what did I say? Well, if only the President signed it, it's what? Debatum. But if the Senate signs it and the President signs it, it becomes what? Dejourn, right? It has the full weight of the state, you see? So they're 100% bound to the Act of Al-Dusers. Keep it in mind, Act of Al-Dusers is the mother treaty over all treaties, right? Okay, so now that we went over that, just as a reminder to show you that the United States understands their obligations. They understand, and they said for the record, they're gonna adhere to every article and every clause. And they're gonna observe it, right? And fulfill it, right? In what? Good faith. What is that? That's the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties of 1969, Article 26. It talks about what? Pacta sunt servanda, right? All treaties, all agreements, right? Should be in full force and effect, in good faith. In good faith, you see that? And this is why the United States don't want Moors to wake up because the United States, I mean, they're overly committed to this. There ain't no halfway. No, they 100% committed to this, you see? Alright, let's continue. That's about the President, okay? Now getting back to the case, okay? Alright. We're going to recap a little bit. We're going to go to page 197. Okay, of the judgment, okay? So we have to learn a little bit more about what was up with counsel court? Okay, what was up with counsel court? That way, we can get a determination of, okay, the United States, as we found out, they ended up with a limited counsel court jurisdiction over the Moors. But keep in mind, counsel court is a neutral venue for Americans and Moroccans to come into that venue, okay? It's an international court, right? Between who? Moroccans and all foreigners who were signatory powers to the treaty. You have to remember, the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906 is an international conference. Why? Because three continents was involved, right? Tangier was located where? Kingdom of Morocco territory. But they were signing treaties with who? People from what? Europe. And they were signing treaties with who else? People from what's connotatively known as America. So three different continents came together to sign a treaty. That's an international treaty. It's recognized as international. Therefore, the counsel court is recognized what? International, you see? You gotta understand what's happening here. So let's go back to the case on page 197, recap a little bit. Find, okay, the United States ended up with counsel court jurisdiction? But then all of a sudden, they decided to do what? Relinquish. Relinquish it in nineteen fifty-six. So let's find out what happened between nineteen fifty-two to nineteen fifty-six and from nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty, right? So we got really three timelines. Nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-six, right? And nineteen sixty, three timelines that happened, right? Within basically an eight-year timeframe. Alright, let's talk about that today, because Moors have a lot of questions about this, okay? Alright, so we're on page one ninety-seven, like I said. Um, let's take it from the top, brother, Joseph.
One ninety-seven, Judgment of twenty-seventh eight fifty-two, U.S. Nationals in Morocco. The fifth contention of the United States is that the Consular jurisdiction in Morocco was recognized and confirmed by various provisions of the Act of Al Jazeera, and that the United States acquired an autonomous right to exercise such jurisdiction independently, excuse me, of the operation of the Most Favored Nations Clause.
Oh, so the United States was trying to say they had an independent right in which we all found out that that just wasn't true, right? That the ICJ said, no, we don't accept that legal argument. You were not independent. The Act of Al Jazeera is what? A multilateral treaty, it's not a bilateral treaty, right? So they don't have an independent right, right? Okay, but what's my point here? We're talking about what? The Act of Al Jazeera, which talked about Consular Court, alright? Okay, uh, Brother Greg?
In nineteen oh six, the twelve powers at Al Jazeera's all exercised capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the General Treaty with Great Britain of eighteen fifty-six or by the Spanish Treaty of eighteen sixty-one. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in the case of Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of Most Favored Nation Clauses, as in the case of the United States, or without treaty rights, but with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco, as in the case of certain other states. Accordingly, the Act of Al Jazeera presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of Consular jurisdiction, and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to the then existing Consular tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, forty-five, fifty-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-seven, ninety-one, one oh one, one oh two, and one nineteen. For example, Chapter five, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains Article one oh two, which provides, every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by Consular jurisdiction and on Moor subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. In the conditions which existed at the time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the Consular Courts.
Alright, pause, okay. So now that we did a little recap, the ICJ is sitting here reading the Act of Al Jazeera's out loud. And they say, yeah, the United States is a signatory power. The United States uh needs to understand Article one oh two. What was Article one oh two about? It's about every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by Consular jurisdiction and on Moor subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction. So why was the ICJ pointing out this particular article? It's because the ICJ is looking at the interpretation of the treaty saying someone has to have jurisdiction over who? Moor subjects. Someone has to have jurisdiction over who? Foreigners. So both foreigners, okay, foreigners and Moor subjects should have the right to be able to take each other into Consular Court. So who's the foreigners in this example? Americans. Who are the Moor subjects? Moroccans. So both Americans and Moroccans have a right to do what? Petition what? Consular Court, you see that? So the ICJ looked at the interpretation, just saying, well, I know the Moors haven't woke up yet, but uh, we still gotta maintain a Consular Court to have it readily available. Keep in mind, right? What did we learn earlier in this case? Okay. What we learned earlier in case is that France, right? France, uh, on page one ninety-two, right? Let's scroll up to one ninety-two. France on page one ninety-two, in the same case. Last paragraph, right? So you got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm gonna say seventh article, uh, seventh paragraph, page one ninety-two, right? What did we learn about what the United, what the ICJ told France? Okay, let's take it from the sixth paragraph right here, uh, Brother Joseph?
Reliance has also been placed upon the position of France and French nationals as regards the new tribunals of the Protectorate, which have been established for the purpose of exercising jurisdiction over foreigners and applying Moroccan laws to them in the French zone. These tribunals have been constituted with French aid and under French direction and supervision. It is suggested that these are in reality Consular Courts, and that the United States is entitled to be placed in this regard, in a position of equity with France. But the tribunals of the Protectorate in the French zone are not in any sense Consular Courts. They are Moroccan courts organized on French models and standards, affording guarantees of judicial equity to foreigners. Accordingly, the court cannot accept this contention.
Alright, so what's happening here? So the ICJ, first of all, said, okay, well, France was supposed to establish a Consular Court. So instead of France establishing Consular Court, France turned around and put who in the Consular Court? Frenchmen. And the ICJ said, no, we can't accept this contention that this is a competent Consular Court. So the ICJ did what? They dismissed that, they removed it, they did not recognize that as being a competent Consular Court. So what happened next? Okay, now you find out in this case that the ICJ awarded the United States, they what? A limited Consular Court. Well, if they awarded the United States a limited Consular Court, that means the same obligations on the United States to put who? As the judges? Moors, you see? So even though the United States were awarded a Consular Court, they didn't wanna wake up the Moors, no more than France wanted to wake up the Moors, right? Okay, listen. So now that we've learned that the ICJ said, uh, but the tribunals of the Protectorate in the French zone are not in any sense Consular Courts. They are Moroccan courts organized on a French model and standards, affording guarantees of judicial equality to foreigners. Accordingly, the court cannot accept this contention. So if the ICJ kicked out France's court, what makes you think they weren't gonna kick out America's so-called Consular Court? You see, the United States was thinking ahead. Why am I making this point? Okay, let's go back to the board. Keep in mind, the ICJ awarded the United States with a limited Consular Court. But the United States turned around in nineteen fifty-six and did what? A relinquishment of Consular Court by the United States. Nineteen fifty-six, four years later, why? The United States like, eh, we ain't gonna wake up no Moors, we're not gonna take that risk. It's not worth it, you see? Why? Because if the Moors would have taken the United States to court, guess what the Moors could have said to the ICJ? Between the years of nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-six, if the Moors had woke up and established their governments and started to enforce Consular Court, the United States sitting there talking, oh, we already got a Consular Court ready for y'all. We got some Americans sitting there with some fezes on, they got Shriner's fezes on, with jewels all on them, expecting Moors to sit in there thinking that's a competent Consular Court for Moroccans to come in, but yet you got Shriner sitting there as the judges. So let's read it as if the Moors had taken the United States of America to court between the year nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-six. Let's read it, this is what it would have sounded like, okay? Watch this. Okay, let's take it from here. Where, what? Watch this. Now, this is how the Moors would have been talking at the ICJ, check it out. This is what the United States was concerned about, so they were thinking ahead, right? Watch this. It said, but the tribunals of the Protectorate in the United States of America are not in any sense Consular Courts. They are Moroccan courts organized on American models and standards, affording guarantees of judicial equality to Moors. Accordingly, the court cannot accept this contention. That's what the ICJ would have told the United States of America. Why? You can't have Americans sitting there in the Consular Court. No different you could have Frenchmen, can't have Frenchmen, you can't have Americans sitting in Consular Court. So the United States said, they looked at that political chessboard, they said, yeah, let's not pretend to do the same thing France did, because France got embarrassed at the ICJ. When the ICJ kicked out that Consular Court. Everybody around the world found out about that on August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two, then France was pretending to have Moors sitting in Consular Court. So the United States of America got smart, said, yeah, we ain't falling for that banana in the tailpipe. ICJ already got France on that one. Why would they turn around and the United States of America follow suit to make the same mistake, you see? So moving forward, they decided to get rid of the Consular Court. It wasn't worth it to them, why? Because they realized, let's just keep these Moor subjugators who? Naturalized Americans, instead of letting these Moors find out that they are what? Moroccans, you see? So the name of the game is if you ain't Moroccan, then ain't no need for no Consular Court, because Consular Court is only for who? Moroccans versus Americans, or Americans versus who? Moroccans. So let's keep all these Moors thinking they're Americans, right? This is what's happening. Okay, listen. Now we'll come down to page, uh, let's go to page one ninety-nine, okay? One ninety-nine, over from here.
And it also provided that in Article eighty-one, the words, by the competent Consular Court authority must be deemed to be omitted, and in Article ninety-one, the word competent must henceforth be substituted for the word consular. It is clear that in nineteen thirty-seven, France representing Morocco and Great Britain were proceeding upon the assumption that certain of the provisions of the Act of Al Jazeera's recognized a limited Consular jurisdiction for the purposes of the judicial proceedings therein described. The court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Al Jazeera's which are involved. It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the Consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Al Jazeera's which depend on the existence of Consular jurisdiction.
Pause. Let's read it again from here.
The court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Al Jazeera's which are involved. It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the Consular jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Al Jazeera's which depend on the existence of Consular jurisdiction.
Pause, so the Act of Al Jazeera's, right? Depended on the existence of Consular jurisdiction, Consular Court, right? Not the Supreme Court of the United States. Not the Circuit Court of the United States. Not the United States District Court. Not Traffic Court of the several Union States. Anytime a Moor had a dispute with an American, or American had a dispute with a Moor, then the treaty says what? In order to settle that dispute, it depends on the existence of Consular jurisdiction. What does jurisdiction mean? The court, Consular Court. So the ICJ said, it's gotta be someone overseeing that venue according to the treaty. Alright, so let's repeat it again. But yet, the United States turned around and relinquished the Consular Court by the United States nineteen fifty-six. We're building up to that. The ICJ has set forth a ruling. It must be a Consular Court. Right now, we're gonna find out how did the United States somewhat get away with, right? Closing down Consular Court, right? What's the key word? In part. In part, remember, we talked about that in Class one thirty-two. In part, they keep saying everything is in part, right? Not in whole. Right? Okay, Christine?
This interpretation of the act in some instances leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al Jazeera's conference dealt with the question of Consular jurisdiction. The court cannot by way of interpretation derived from the act a general rule as to full Consular jurisdiction which it does not contain. On the other hand, the court cannot disregard particular provisions involving a limited resort to Consular jurisdiction which are in fact contained in the act and which are still in force as far as the relations between the United States and Morocco are concerned.
Alright, so therefore, the treaty between the United States of America and Morocco is what? Still in force, you see that? Still in force, this is the ICJ saying. Treaty still in force. And the ICJ had to come out and say, you know what? This is unfortunate, right? Says right here, this interpretation of the act, Act of Al Jazeera's, in some instances leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner which the Al Jazeera's conference, conference dealt with the question of Consular jurisdiction. What was the question about? Why the hell then you wake up the Moors? Why would you sign a treaty that puts the Moors back into the Consular Court as judges? Then you turn around and then wake up the Moors? So this is the ICJ is looking at, the question. Why do y'all wake up the Moors? That was a treaty obligation, you see? So the ICJ turns around and looks at and say, look, we ain't politicians, uh, but we see the foul play here, but unfortunately, the Moors aren't here to defend themselves between nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-two as the case itself. Which means the Moors have done what? Acquiesced. Tacit acquiescence, that's a silent acceptance of the effect of what this court was about to do to give the United States a limited temporary stay to have jurisdiction over the Moors. But what type of jurisdiction? Consular jurisdiction, that's Consular Court. You must make a distinction between Consular Court up here and all their several courts down here, which are domestic courts, domestic court down here of America's courts. That's American on American dispute, that's down here. But up here is Consular Court, that's American and Moroccan and Moroccan versus American court up here. So they wanted to keep the Moors down here, and domestic court is American on American dispute, you see? You gotta see what's happening here. So with that being said, the ICJ turned around, as we know in Classes one thirty, one thirty-two, we learned, the ICJ turned around and gave the United States a limited jurisdiction over the Moors, right? Limited, just more, okay? So the ICJ awarded the United States a limited, a limited Consular jurisdiction over the Moors, you see? Not whole, but limited, not full, but limited, until the Moors do what? Stop acquiescing, right? And start, the Moors have to start doing what? Enforcing what? Enforcing the Charter's provisions on the Article seven-three to stop being a non-self-governing territory. The Moors had to start what? Governing again, that was the obligation, the Act of Al Jazeera's. The Moors had an obligation to govern, they wasn't doing it. You see? Alright, so since the United States ended up with a temporary or limited jurisdiction, okay? Now you come over here, at nineteen fifty-six, Public Law eight fifty-six comes out, right? What is Public Law eight fifty-six? Well, now the United States is talking about, well, it's been since nineteen fifty-two since this judgment came out, August twenty-seventh nineteen fifty-two. Now you fast forward to August first nineteen fifty-six, nearly four years later, right? Look at the calendar month, August. Right? Look at the calendar month, August nineteen fifty-two to August nineteen fifty-six. Four years. The Moors have yet to do what? Wake up. Moors are still acquiescing. The United States during that whole time, they ain't trying to wake up the Moors, because they don't wanna establish what? A real consul court, because that requires Moors to sit in there. Four years have gone by, and the Moorish Americans still hide in the temples. The black man is still hiding at the Baptist church. Black man still hiding at the NAACP. The black man hiding at the HBCUs. Ain't nobody talking about the case. Nobody invoking the rights of the Moors of the Act of Algiersis or the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. So now the United States is talking about, uh, in nineteen fifty-six, uh, let's get rid of consul court. Because we really don't need it. But yet, it's an obligation of the treaty. But yet, the ICJ said, it shall be a consul court according to the treaty, United States, since you still got your name on the treaty. The treaty is still in full force and effect. Yet, the United States is trying to use a conspiracy to get out of the ruling and to undermine the treaty provisions itself. Right? So now they start to put together a legislative act called Public Law eight fifty-six. The Moors are aware of it. Right? It's chapter eight oh seven, page seven seven-three to seven seven-four, or look up United States Code two-two USC one-four through one-four-three, or look up statute eight, stat forty-four, three-four, stat twenty-nine oh five. And what is all this about? It's about the jurisdiction of the United States. Has civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors, especially when they keep invoking AA two-two-two one-four-one. Right? Because that's chapter two, or should I say title two? Title two, chapter twenty-two, section one-four-one to one-four-three. You see that? And that title two, cha-chapter twenty-two, United States Code one-four to one-four-three. You see that? That's the same thing as this. Department of Justice has jurisdiction over the Moors, but Taj Reed Bay and R E Bay Publications keep pumping this crap out here to the Moors to say, oh yeah, use this. That's called liberation. No, that's called adjudication. That's what the Moors need to understand. Right? Okay, listen. So in Public Law eight fifty-six, we learned something very important about who the parties are. And we learned that even though they passed a bill through the legislative branch of the United States, the president never signed the bill. He signed what? A policy. A memo. Because they doing this all in what? In part. Not in whole. What does in part mean? That means that the president didn't sign off on the bill, because that would have had the full weight of the state. That would have been in hold. So since the president didn't sign it, he did some unilateral act to sign off on a memo and created a policy instead of creating law, that means it's just simply de facto. It means it's an agreement, but it doesn't have the full weight of the state. The United States of America, that is. Right? Okay, so let, let's read it real quick. There, there's a recap. We're gonna learn about the parties. We're gonna learn what they said this document is. It's really a policy. And then we're gonna take it from there. Uh, uh, brother Dre.
Whereas the laws of the United States invest the ministers and consuls of the United States in certain countries, including Morocco, with judicial authorities so far as the exercise of the same is allowed by a treaty, with such countries in accordance with usage in such countries and...
Pause. So therefore, right here, the Moorish Americans, they never read. It says right here, the United States has judicial authority because of what? The treaties. But why else did the United States have judicial authority? Because the Moors acquiesced. You see how they conveniently left that out of there? Yes, they got powers because of the treaty. But it was only limited, because the Moors had tacitly acquiesced to allow the United States to have a privileged status. Not a right, but a privilege to have jurisdiction over the Moors, you see? So the United States is not telling the full truth here. Yeah, the treaty gave them some privileges, but it was the Moors who gave them the real right, because the Moors were acquiescing. But they didn't wanna put that in here, you see? Alright, from here.
Whereas the consuls of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals under the treaty between the United States and Morocco signed September sixteen, eighteen thirty-six, and the Act of Algiersis signed April seventh, nineteen oh six. And they exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid signed July third, eighteen eighty, and...
Alright, so pause. So right here, the United States said, the United States in Morocco, the United States in Morocco, right? The United States in Morocco is permitted. Right? This is the Moors. The Moors don't know how to read. We're gonna learn how to read today. Okay? Whereas the consuls of the United States in Morocco, which means Morocco is not in the United States. Morocco is not in America. The United States is in Morocco. Morocco is not in America. Even the United States is saying they're in Morocco, and the dang old Moors keep saying they're in America. Listen. Whereas the consuls of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over who? Over American nationals. Who the American nationals? The Moors who've been what? Naturalized according to what treaty? They tell you right here, according to the treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. You see that? You see how they're deriving their authority from your Moorish treaties? To call you an American, because you've been naturalized through a treaty since eighteen eighty. Now they can get to call you an American national. Why? Because you haven't renounced. You haven't pledged your allegiance back to Moroccan state, which means you have done what? You done what? You acquiesced and still remain what? An American. But you're an adopted American. That's your surname. It's not your maiden name. Your maiden name is what? Moroccan. You see? You see how they, they're talking out loud? Okay, from the top. Whereas the consuls of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over Moors who are still naturalized under the treaty between the United States of, United States and Morocco signed September sixteen, eighteen thirty-six. So why they talking about the treaty of peace, treaty of peace and friendship of eighteen thirty-six? Because of Articles twenty and twenty-one. They gave them civil and criminal jurisdiction over naturalized Moors, you see? Then they continue to say what? And the Act of Algiersis signed April seventh, nineteen oh six. And they exercise by custom and usage the same jurisdiction over, over, over subjects of Morocco. Who the subject of Morocco? Moors. Or others who may be designated as proteges. Who are designated as proteges? That's Barack H. Obama, Michelle Obama, Condoleezza Rice, Eric Holder, and the like. Those are proteges who now have what? Extra protections under qualified immunitys because they work for a foreign government commonly known as the United States. But yet, they're Moors working for the United States of America. So the United States mistook as proteges, and everybody else is what? Just simply what? Subjects of Morocco. However, in the case of the ICJ nineteen fifty-two, they just kept referring to all the Moors as what? Protege, protege, protege. So they had who? Who they listed as protege? Joyce Floyd. You see? Because they didn't wanna say the word Moor out loud in nineteen fifty-two in the case. France didn't wanna say it out loud either. France, and the United States of America said, yeah, let's just keep using the word protege instead of saying what? Subjects of Morocco, i.e. Moor subjects, right? Do you understand what's happening here? So now it continues on, it says, whereas... Dre?
Whereas Morocco is now the only foreign country where the consuls of the United States exercise such jurisdiction and whereas it is the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such time as it becomes appropriate, therefore be it.
Pause. So now, the president began with permission to create a policy. Says, whereas it is the policy of the United States to discontinue the exercise of extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco at such time as it becomes appropriate. You see, policies. Right? But they're talking about relinquishing consul court, but yet the ICJ told them to establish consul court. In order to give who an opportunity to use consul court? Moors. That way, they don't end up with the whole Dred Scott situation again. They told Dred Scott he was plaintiff in error. Why? They, they said he couldn't, Dred Scott couldn't use their courts. Okay. Now, after nineteen fifty-two, the ICJ says, guess what? If another Dred Scott comes petitioning, guess where he's supposed to take the, the, uh, application to? The dispute goes to where? Consul court. Okay. So the United States have a right to establish consul court between nineteen fifty-two, nineteen fifty-six, but they turn around, now they wanna relinquish it all of a sudden. Why is that? Well, I already told you why. Because they know they ain't gonna put no Moors in the venue. I already told you why. It's because they learned that France couldn't get, get away with the propaganda of saying that, oh, these are some Moors in the consul court. You see, they got on some fezzes. But I know it's a shrine or shit, fezz. But don't worry about that. Don't worry about their faces. Just worry about the fact they weren't fezzes. So the United States knew that wasn't gonna flow. That was not gonna stand in law. Has no standing, you see? Alright, now, listen. So in nineteen fifty-six, right? A lot happened in nineteen fifty-six. Public Law eight fifty-six comes out. They're trying to relinquish the consular court. What else happened in nineteen fifty-six? Okay. This right here is what? Member counties, oh, excuse me, member countries of the United Nations. Okay? Here's all, here's the United Nations headquarters. Bunch of flags. Okay, let's go down. What? Didn't, didn't the Kingdom of Morocco become a member state, right? Where did it become a member state? Kingdom of Morocco, right? They're using the short title, Morocco, but it's Kingdom of Morocco proper. Became a member state November twelfth, nineteen fifty-six. You see what's happening? And I, and the same year that the King Morocco got their independence, March second, nineteen fifty-six, immediately the United States is now talking about relinquishing consul court. Because they had worked out a deal with Mohammed the Fifth. Because the United States sits on what? The Security Council at the United Nations. They get to pick and choose who becomes a member state. So they've already worked out their little conspiracy plan with Mohammed the Fifth in nineteen fifty-six. So Public Law eight fifty-six comes out what? August first, nineteen fifty-six. King Morocco becomes a member state September, excuse me, November twelfth, nineteen fifty-six. Right? All the same year this has happened. You see the conspiracy happening? Right? Now, keep in mind, them relinquishing consul court violates the ICJ ruling. However, here's the deal. When the ICJ submits a ruling, it's up to the two disputing parties to get together and put together a political agreement, say how they're gonna now enforce the ruling. Okay. But France lost the consul court. ICJ told the United States to maintain consul court. So the dispute was between the United States of America and France. King Morocco had nothing to do with the ICJ ruling. So now the United States of America is now talking to the King Morocco, who ain't got nothing to do with the dispute whatsoever, because King Morocco is a new, a new name for a territory, new. The treaty recognized who on the treaty? It's the Empire Morocco, not the Kingdom Morocco. That's a brand new name. Had nothing to do with the dispute. King Morocco was not a party at the time of nineteen fifty-two when this case came out. There was no King Morocco in nineteen fifty-two. So why would the United States of America think they can negotiate with the King Morocco in nineteen fifty-six? To come up with a political agreement regarding a ruling that came out in nineteen fifty-two before the King Morocco even existed? It's called conspiracy, right? Listen. So keep in mind, let's look at some dates. Nineteen fifty-two, France versus the United States of America, the ruling comes out, right? August twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two. Four years later, now Public Law eight fifty-six comes out, August first, nineteen fifty-six. In that same year, France and the King Morocco with Sultan Mohammed, they signed the Franco-Morocco Agreement to now terminate the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve and allow Mohammed the Fifth to have his independence, March second, nineteen fifty-six. The United States signs Public Law eight fifty-six, August first, nineteen fifty-six. Then all of a sudden, the King Morocco becomes a member state of the United Nations, November twelfth, nineteen fifty-six. All that happened in nineteen fifty-six. You see? France, United States of America, King Morocco, all in one year. Right? Listen. So now, in nineteen fifty-six, Moors should be familiar with this. A lot of Moors are familiar with this screen. This is about what? Now, the United States says, okay, from Title twenty-two, Foreign Relations and intercourse, right? It's about consul court. That's that twenty-two USC chapter two, right? Consul court. Now, the Moors are familiar with this. The United States talking about, oh, we repealed. We don't have jurisdiction over the Moors anymore. This is what all the Moorish Americans ran off and said, the United States don't have jurisdiction over us no more. That's not true. Misconcepts, misinformation, dis, disinformation. That's called propaganda. What was repealed? The consul court. Consul court is what the United States was trying to get rid of. Relinquishment of consul court. Not jurisdiction over Moors, because the Moors are still running around saying that what? The true American. They wasn't saying they're Moroccan. So the United States said, well, we don't need no consul court if they ain't no Moroccans. So now they're trying to relinquish consul court. But yet, the United States is still the secretary of power to the Act of Algiersis, and the ICJ said there must be what? A consul court. So listen. We're gonna read this. Show the Moors something. Okay, it's, it's small text, so I'm gonna do it like this. Okay. Uh, brother Johnson?
Act August one, nineteen fifty-six repealed Sections one forty-one to one forty-three effective upon the date which the president determined to be appropriate for the relinquishment of jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco. Jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco was relinquished by memorandum of President Eisenhower dated September fifteen, nineteen fifty-six. Notice was given to Morocco on October sixth, nineteen fifty-six, and all pending cases were disposed of by nineteen sixty. See bulletin of the State Department, volume thirty-five, nine oh nine, page eight four four, section...
Alright, pause. Let's read it again. Subsection one four one to one four three repealed August first, nineteen fifty-six. Chapter eight oh seven, seventy, stat seven seven four. Act August first, nineteen fifty-six repealed section one four one to one four three effective upon the date which the president determined to be appropriate for the relinqu, relinquishment of jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco. Jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco was relinquished by memorandum of President Eisenhower dated September fifteenth, nineteen fifty-six. Notice was given to Morocco on October sixth, nineteen fifty-six. And all pending cases were disposed of by nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty, that's an important date, nineteen sixty. See bulletin, listen. See bulletin of the State Department, volume thirty-five, nine oh nine, page eight forty-four. Now they give me a reference point. Right? Okay, now let's go over two. Okay, now, let's go over two of them. Okay, what do I have up here? I got the Department of State bulletin. Right? Then, they say, go see the bulletin of the State Department, dated what? November twenty-sixth, nineteen fifty-six, right? Keep in mind, uh, the President signed the memorandum in October nineteen fifty-six, right? So, then, November twenty-sixth, nineteen fifty-six, now, the State Department, right? The State Department is now sending a memo to who? Kingdom of Morocco. All this is happening in nineteen fifty-six. Keep in mind, when did the King Morocco become a member state? November twelfth, nineteen fifty-six. So, all this is happening rapidly, you see? The President already sent a letter to the King Morocco. New kid on the block. The brand-new state on planet Earth. As a name, Kingdom of Morocco, brand-new state name. Right? Okay, let's, listen, what, what, what was it a matter? Okay. Let's read it, just a moment. Hey, Brother Dre?
U.S. Consular Jurisdiction in Morocco relinquished. Following is the text of a note from Cavendish, um, W. Cannon, U.S. Ambassador to Morocco, which was delivered to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Sharifian Empire at Rabat on October sixth, concerning the relinquishment by the, um, U.S. Government of its Consular Jurisdiction in Morocco. The note was addressed to, uh, Amad, uh, Father Perez? Moroccan Minister of Foreign, Minister of Foreign Affairs, Rabat, October sixth, nineteen fifty-six. Number sixty-two, Excellency. I have the honor to refer to the statement issued by the Department of State on January twenty-sixth, nineteen fifty-six, announcing the intention of the United States Government to relinquish its Consular Jurisdiction in Morocco at the appropriate time and keeping with the desire to modernize this aspect of the treaty relationship between Morocco and the United States. It is the decision of my government to relinquish this day these Consular Jurisdictions which were accorded to the United States of America in a Treaty of Peace and Friendship first concluded with Morocco in seventeen eighty-seven and renewed in eighteen thirty-six and in the Act of Aspiras, signed in nineteen oh six, as well as to cease to exercise jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid, signed in eighteen eighty. It is my understanding, however, that American proteges will have access to the same local courts as American citizens in accordance with the procedures followed in the past when capitulations have been relinquished. It affords me great satisfaction at the outset of my mission to convey to your Excellency my government's decision in this regard. Accept, Excellency, the assurances of my highest consideration.
Alright, that's the end of the reading. So, what did we learn? So, in November nineteen fifty-six, as soon as Mohammed the Fifth, who's king, and he's not Sultan, he's the king and he's a new kid on the block, because he's the newest state in nineteen fifty-six, there was no King of Morocco, right, prior to nineteen fifty-six. So, look what the United States puts in here. You really gotta catch what's happening. Here's what the Moors don't understand. You, you've been, you've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by your Moors American teachers who keep telling you, the United States don't have jurisdiction over you. Look what the United States is saying in nineteen fifty-six to the Kingdom of Morocco. Right? Okay, from the top again, Brother Dre.
It is the decision of my government to relinquish this day these Consular Jurisdictions which were accorded to the United States of America in a Treaty of Peace and Friendship first concluded with Morocco in seventeen eighty-seven and renewed in eighteen thirty-six and in the Act of Aspiras, signed in nineteen oh six, as well as to cease to exercise jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid, signed in eighteen eighty. It is my understanding, however, that American proteges will have access to the same local courts as American citizens in accordance with the procedures followed in the past when capitulations have been relinquished.
Alright. So, look what the United States is doing. They involved the Moors Treaties. That's giving them jurisdiction over Moors. But then, they say, let's relinquish Consular Court. Why? Because now, we're gonna enforce, really, the Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph two. These Moors have still acquiesced. So, therefore, these Moors are still Americans, and they run around saying they're the true Americans. So, now, the United States is getting rid of Consular Court in nineteen fifty-six, four years after the ICJ ruling. And now, they're saying these Moors now gonna come into what? The local American courts under civil and criminal jurisdiction of the American courts. I'm gonna read it again. It is the decision of my government to relinquish this day these Consular Jurisdictions, which is Consular Court for Moroccans, which were accorded to the United States of America in a Treaty of Peace and Friendship first concluded with Morocco in seventeen eighty-seven and renewed in eighteen thirty-six and in the Act of Aspiras, signed in nineteen oh six, as well as to cease to exercise jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid, signed in eighteen eighty. You see how they're talking about these treaties of eighteen eighty? I've been trying to tell the Moors about the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty ever since, uh, AMPAQ Study Session number eight. This is class number one thirty-three. I've been trying to tell these Moors, the United States is using your Moors Treaty of eighteen eighty to subjugate you. You ain't listening. But maybe you'll listen to the white man who's talking about this. Let's read what the white man said, alright? The white man said, because that's what y'all like to call the white man or the European. Let's look at what the Europeans said. Okay, it says, right here. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship first concluded with Morocco in seventeen eighty-seven and renewed in eighteen thirty-six and in the Act of Aspiras, signed in nineteen oh six, that Taj Mahal Bay won't tell you nothing about these treaties, as well as to cease to exercise jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco. What type of jurisdiction? Consular, Consular jurisdiction, which is Consular Court. Then, they're gonna turn around and tell you, now, where they're gonna put these Moors at, okay? Says, however, that American proteges will have access to the same local courts. Local courts. Local courts. You see that? Americans, because now, the Moors, they calling the Moors what? Americans. They're naturalized Americans. And the Moors themselves keep saying they're who? Americans, the true Americans. The United States is like, man, this is a layup.
Yeah.
They ain't even gotta tell the Moors that they're Americans. The Moors are saying they're Americans all on their own. So, the United States said, okay, these Americans can use the local courts. But Taj Mahal Bay and all the so-called civic Moors, Kujo Ill, et cetera, will turn around and tell you, oh, these Europeans, these foreigners don't have jurisdiction over us. They sitting here writing a letter directly to the Kingdom of Morocco, telling King Morocco that the United States is gonna put these Moors under the civil and crim, criminal jurisdiction of American courts. And they're gonna relinquish Consular Court. They putting all this on the record. Right in front of the Moors spaces. Keep in mind, the Moors have their Moors American temples, even in the year nineteen fifty-six. They ain't paying attention. I'm gonna read it again. It says, however, that American proteges, you see that? American proteges, who is that? That's who? American Moors. You see that? Moors Americans. American Moors. Moors Americans. Moors Americans, Moors protege, Moors. It's another word for what? Moors. Right? Because they were talking about the Moors subjects already early, see? Where did they talk about Moors subject? Yeah? So, right here, right? To exercise jurisdiction over the Moors subjects. Right here. Over subjects of Morocco. The Moors, right? The Moors, the Mo. So, right there, Mo, whatever Mo, the Mo subjects. That's Moors. The Moors. The Moors are the subjects. Then, later on, they turn around and call you what? Proteges. Proteges. Right? So, you got Moors, you got Moors subjects of Morocco, right? They also call you proteges. You see that? And they always talking about this Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty tied in with the protege, and you learn about that in France versus United States of America, they kept calling the Moors proteges. So, they come down here and they say, uh, well, however, even though we're gonna relinquish Consular Court, because ain't no more Moroccans, so, however, that the American Moors will have access to the same local courts as American citizens. You see what they just did? They making a distinction. You got American citizens and Moors who been naturalized, who are really what? Moroccans. Who been naturalized as Americans, gonna be treated as now as what? American citizens. You see what's happening? And the Moors ran off and said, man, these Europeans are de facto, they don't have jurisdiction over me. That's not true. The ICJ confirmed it. Then, the United States turn around and reaffirm by saying, uh, King Morocco, I know you're new kid on the block, but since you got something to do with Moroccans for the most part, uh, we don't have jurisdiction with this Consular Court no more, and we just gonna treat these Moors like they're Americans and put them in American courts. And the Moors Americans run around here kicking and screaming, talking about the white man is evil, talking about the European is a liar, talking about we shall overcome, it's Moors Americans. No, you're not. As long as you keep saying you're American, guess what? It'd be another ninety-five years by the time y'all figure this out, because it's already been ninety-five years since nineteen thirty. Be another ninety-five years before you realize the whole problem is you. You delayed your own justice, because you keep calling yourself American, because they treating you now like an American citizen. You see that? Even though they, right here, they say you're American protege. See that? Okay, listen. You remember when we was going over, this is about the United States, right? The Moors are familiar with this. When they see that page, all, all the Moors know what that look like. Right? Moors like to talk about that. Chapter two, Consular Courts, United States relinquished jurisdiction. Relinquished jurisdiction of what? Consular Court, not jurisdiction over you as an American. They don't study. But listen. You see right here, it mentioned this, all pending cases were disposed by nineteen sixty. Okay, so, if they had already told the King Morocco in nineteen fifty-six, they're gonna relinquish jurisdiction and treat these Moors as if they're what? Americans. Why all of a sudden with the United States, you look up four years later, like, yeah, 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 we shut down Consular Court? All these Moors now are Americans. And did all of it by nineteen sixty. What's happening? Remember, I told you three dates? Nineteen fifty-two, right? Nineteen fifty-two. Nineteen fifty-two. Nineteen fifty-six. And nineteen sixty, something happened. What happened in nineteen sixty? Okay. Here we go. Resolution fifteen fourteen came out. It's about decolonization. You see that? The title is Declaration on the Granting of Independence. The U.N. was granting independence to colonial countries and people. So, it was granting independence to people who been colonized, nineteen sixty. So, the United States knew that the U.N. was already putting together drafts, building up to fully ratifying or fully signing Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty. The United States already knew, and the Kingdom of Morocco, who had became a member state, November nineteen fifty-six, they also knew the U.N. was working on this resolution, trying to get votes on it to get it passed. So, when it came out in nineteen sixty, it had what? Eighty-nine yeses from the member states. Eighty-nine yeses, zero noes, nine abstains. Who was abstaining? The United States of America and all the colonists, who all were either at one time a signatory power to the Act of Aspiras, or they were still a signatory power such as the United States of America. They didn't want the Moors to be what? Independent. And they knew this treaty, because this is a treaty, even though it's a resolution, it's treated as if it's a treaty, because all member states are signing it. So, they're recognizing the treaty, because it tells you how to treat a certain situation. So, Resolution fifteen fourteen comes out, and the United States is rushing to make sure they cancel Consular Court, pretend like the Moors are all Americans. That way, the Mohammed the Fifth and the United States in a conspiracy saying, these Moors don't exist. But wait a minute. Isn't there something else that happened after nineteen fifty-six? What happened between nineteen fifty-six and nineteen sixty? Okay, let's go to Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty. Okay. We got the Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty. What happened regarding this treaty right here between the year nineteen fifty-six and nineteen sixty? Okay, you come down past Article fifteen, right? Go past Article fifteen, there's Article fifteen. Moors know about it by now. You go down to what? Footnotes. Look what the United States was doing with Mohammed the Fifth. To try to put the nail in the coffin to the Moors. Even though they referring to the Moors as being Americans in nineteen fifty-six, this is the memo that was sent to the King of Morocco. The United States is still smart enough to know that really ain't sufficient enough. Why? Because the treaty was still in full force effect. The preamble of the Treaty of Madrid said, this is what? A fixed and uniform basis. So, between nineteen fifty-six and nineteen sixty, before Resolution fifteen fourteen came out, the United States, Mohammed the Fifth got together in a conspiracy to do what's called a crime against humanity based in a partial genocide, alright? This is what they did. No?
A U.S. note of March seventh, March seventeenth of nineteen fifty, fifty-nine, addressed to the Moroccan Ministry of Foreign Affairs, referred to a note from the Ministry dated October eighth of nineteen fifty-eight, in which the embassy had been informed that the Moroccan government had decided to strike all prescriptions relating to Moroccan nationality from the text of the Madrid Convention. The U.S. note said, in part, quote, "The government of the United States of America, having unilaterally relinquished certain rights in Morocco with the reemergence of Morocco into independence in nineteen fifty-six, considers that, in line with historical developments, Article fifteen of the Madrid Convention on Protections of eighteen eighty has become obsolete and without effect." Quote, "The government of the United States takes due cognizance, therefore, of the action taken by the Moroccan government as set forth in its above-sighted note, which the United States Government understands to refer only to Article fifteen as the Madrid Convention on Protection of eighteen eighty."
So, you see right here, in a conspiracy to perform a crime against humanity, i.e. a partial genocide, because it's a paper genocide, to try to prohibit the Moors from their Moroccan nationality. Right? So, what happened? From the top. A United States note of March seventeenth, nineteen fifty-nine, addressed to the Moroccan Ministry of Foreign Affairs, referred to a note from the Ministry dated October eighth, nineteen fifty-eight, in which the embassy had been informed that the Moroccan government had decided to strike off prescriptions relating to Moroccan nationality from the text of the Madrid Convention. Pause right there. Why do the Moors Americans keep saying they're Americans? When the United States of America knows you're Moroccan. The Kingdom of Morocco knows you're Moroccan. But you turn around, keep saying you're American. This don't make no sense. Right here, the United States and Morocco is admitting you are Moroccan, you have Moroccan nationality. The United States is trying to strike it from a treaty, as if they can strike your bloodline. You can't strike somebody's bloodline. But what they trying to do? They're trying to block the portal, the portal of Article fifteen. What was Article fifteen all about? Well, Article fifteen, from the top, brother, uh, Dre.
Article fifteen, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall have, shall after have remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
Alright, so the United States was like, let's just get rid of this whole arm. So if these Moors can't use the portal to return to Morocco as what? Moroccans. So even though the United States shut down constant court, they knew that was not sufficient enough. They had to try to get rid of the Moors on paper, get rid of your nationality, which is Moroccan. Cause they knew that the United Nations was putting together what? The United Nations Resolution fifteen fourteen. They knew that was brewing, it was percolating. The United States and Mohammed the Fifth had to hurry up and try to act like these Moors didn't have no rights as Moroccans. They're all Americans now, so all of a sudden now, Resolution fifteen fourteen is not applicable to Moors, cause Moors run around saying they're Americans. Only Moroccans can do what? Decolonize. But the, but the Moors know they've been colonized, but then they turn around and call themselves Americans. Why? Because your so-called Moorish American master teachers told you you was the true American. Your so-called Moorish American master teachers told you that these so-called white men or European ain't from here, that he's from in Europe. But the reality is their treaties recognize the Americans as having a legal and lawful state to remain in Morocco. No matter where the Europeans go, they're located where? In Morocco. How can you say the Europeans from somewhere else? Because no matter where they go, they in where? Morocco, this don't make no sense what these Moorish Americans been teaching. We all been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray. Now your so-called civic Moorish American teachers been telling you that the United States and several United States don't have jurisdiction, and that's not true. The reason why they have jurisdiction, because it's on you. You keep acting, asking, saying you're American. The United States knows you're Moroccan. The Kingdom of Morocco knows you're Moroccan. Everybody knows you're Moroccan. Noble Dr. Ali tried to tell you that you're Moroccan. You see what's happening? We're being sold out by people wearing fezzes and turbans. Listen. So what do I have up here? I got the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. Why do I have this up here? See, this, this continues to reaffirm Resolution fifteen fourteen for Moors to decolonize. Because Moors run around saying they're Americans, but they know something ain't right. Everybody knows they've been colonized. So the rights indigenous people comes out in here two thousand seven. And the rights indigenous people automatically, when you look at it, you go straight into the preamble, what is the first paragraph of the preamble from here, uh, brother Joseph?
United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the General Assembly, guided by the purpose and principles of the Charter of the United Nations, and good faith in the fulfillment of the obligations assumed by states in accordance with the Charter.
So right there off the top in the preamble, the Moors have read the rights indigenous people from the top. Cause all the Moorish Americans do what? They go straight to Article six, say, we got a right to nationality. Well, what's your nationality? I'm Moorish American. That's an adjective. That's not the contracting party in the treaty. You're Moroccan, the United States knows it, King Morocco knows it, all the European states know you're Moroccan, you like so foolishly keep saying you're American. Listen, so the rights indigenous people are telling you this particular treaty derives authority from where? The Charter. So if you don't read the Charter, how the heck can you enforce the rights indigenous people? But you hear Moors talking about the rights indigenous people all the time, then the next question you need to ask them, how do you enforce it? Where did the rights indigenous people derive this authority? It derived it from what? The Charter. This is about colonization, keep that in mind. Who have up here? Good brother Barack H. Obama. All the Moors have been colonized. The United States is going out of their way to throw you under the bus. Ever since nineteen fifty-two, when they finally got some limited jurisdiction over you, they still sitting there worried about you in nineteen fifty-six. They worried about you in nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen fifty-nine, cause they doing under the table deals with Mohammed the Fifth. They trying to get all this done before nineteen sixty, because Resolution fifteen fourteen is coming out, cause they know the U N General Assembly was drafting it and getting ready to sign it into legislation, or should I say a resolution? They worried about Moors all the way up to nineteen sixty. They, they concerned about these Moors. Why? Cause Moors got a right to be Moroccans, and Moroccans sit in constant court to do what? Bring what? Adjudication against Americans who breach our treaties, laws, and regulations. Since Barack H. Obama comes out, say, man, these Moors, I swear, let me go to Cairo, Egypt. Let me do a proclamation to remind these Moors that they've been colonized. Now, we only gonna watch literally about a minute and a half. This was a nearly a one hour speech. Barack, Barack H. Obama is gonna tell you what's on his mind or why he wrote the speech in the first minute. That tell you his proper what? Concept and context of why he was in Cairo, Egypt in the first place. He gonna tell you really what's on his mind in the first dang old minute. Listen, listen for the word colonialism. Listen.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I am honored to be in the timeless city of Cairo and to be hosted by two remarkable institutions. For over a thousand years, Ula Zaba has stood as a beacon of Islamic learning. And for over a century, Cairo University has been a source of Egypt's advancement. Together, you represent the harmony between tradition and progress. I'm grateful for your hospitality and the hospitality of the people of Egypt. And I'm also proud to carry with me the goodwill of the American people and a greeting of peace from Muslim communities in my country. Assalamu alaikum. We meet in a time of great tension between the United States and Muslims around the world. Tension rooted in historical forces that go beyond any current policy debate. The relationship between Islam and the West includes centuries of coexistence and cooperation, but also conflict and religious wars. More recently, tension has been fed by colonialism that denied rights and opportunities to many Muslims. In a cold war.
Here. Colonialism. This is the first couple, oh, a opening about Muslims. Who are Muslims? Moors, but I like to use the code word Muslim. Let me ask the question. If he say Muslim, some people think, oh, he talking about the Arabs. Are the Arabs colonized? No. Listen. Back it up.
More recently, tension has been fed by colonialism that denied rights and opportunities to many Muslims.
This is his opening. What's on his mind? Colonialism. He saying Muslim, people think, oh, he talking about those Arabs. Uh-uh, the Arabs aren't colonized people. So when he says Muslim, who was he really talking about? Moors. This is the first couple minutes of his speech, so what's on his mind? Colonialism. Okay, why did I show that? Okay, listen. Now you go back to the rights indigenous people. Barack H. Obama comes back and signs this in twenty-ten, he's in Egypt in two thousand nine. He comes back and signs the rights indigenous people after he just told everybody about colonialism. So therefore, on the rights indigenous people, the Moors that actually read it, they would find out that Obama was trying to get the Moors to go back and look at what? The Charter. Regarding who? Indigenous people, you got rights as indigenous Moors. But your rights are guaranteed through the Charter. And through the Charter, you got Article seventy-three, and you got what? Article ninety-two that talks about the I C J. Obama was trying to get the Moors to go back and look at the Charter for your rights. He signed the rights indigenous people as a portal to get you to go back and look at the Charter and understand how to enforce the rights indigenous people. Cause you can't enforce the rights indigenous people unless you follow first the provisions of the Charter. Soon as you go down to the first article, I won't, I won't read all the preamble, the preamble is excellent. Moors should go back and actually read it. What's the first article saying? Okay. Brother Joseph, Article one.
Article one, indigenous peoples have the right to the full enjoyment as a collective or as individuals of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of International Human Rights Law.
Alright, so Obama said you should learn about colonialism. If you go back and listen to his whole speech, he's talking about the Treaty of Tripoli of seventeen ninety-six, Article eleven. Article eleven is about what? The laws of the empire, the laws of Muslims, who Muslims were Moors who were colonized people. He open up, talking about colonialism. You gotta catch high open, you'll, you'll just scare right past him, you're not really listening. You hear him talking, but you're not listening, you see? So then he leaves Cairo, Egypt, two thousand nine, come back and sign the rights indigenous people twenty-ten, and in twenty-ten, he says, you Moors need to go back, cause you're colonized people. You so-called black people need to go and read the rights indigenous people, cause the rights indigenous people derives authority from the Charter. You gotta catch what I'm saying, I'm moving my chess pieces in combination. One thing before the other, sequential order. Obama was trying to get the Moors to wake up and go actually read law. International law. So right there in the first article, it's invoking what again? The Charter of the United Nations, this is what Obama was trying to do, he was leaving breadcrumbs. This is why Mitch McConnell kept saying, we gonna make Barack H. Obama a one-term president. It because in two thousand nine, which it was his first year in office, he was already showing signals that he was gonna try to help these Moors. Mitch McConnell and all the shareholders said, oh, hell no. This gotta be his last term. This is why Mitch McConnell kept saying it. Listen. Article two, good brother.
Article two, indigenous peoples and the individuals are free and equal to all other peoples and individuals and have the rights to be free from any kind of discrimination in the exercise of their rights. In particular, that base on their indigenous origin or identity.
So listen to the word play. So you hear the word discrimination, but look how they tied the word discrimination into something very specific. Listen. Article two, indigenous people, Moors, and individuals are free and equal to all other peoples, and individuals have the right to be free from any kind of discrimination in the exercise of their rights. In particular, catch that. In particular, you see what they tied in there? In particular, that based on their indigenous origin or identity. You can't say that you're black, black is not indigenous. You can't say you're Moorish American, Moorish American is not indigenous. You see how they saying, in particular, you need to be invoking the fact that you're claiming your indigenous origin. What's your origin? Moroccan. You're descendants of Moroccans, isn't this what Noble Dr. Ali trying to tell us? Is this what the United States and Mohammed the Fifth was trying to strike from the treaty in nineteen fifty-eight, which is your Moroccan nationality? That is your indigenous origin, cause you gotta be what? Particular, remember I said law is what? Precise. You can't try to get black rights, ain't no black state on planet Earth. Tell me the name of a state that's called black on planet Earth. There's fifty-five states in Africa, which one is called black? There's approximately thirty-five states in Asia. Which one of them is called black? There's approximately fifty states in Europe, which one is called white? There's no such thing as a black state, there's no such thing as a constitution said, we the black people and our nationality is black. It don't exist. So it's particular, you gotta be particular indigenous origin. And black ain't indigenous. That's a description of a complexion, but that's not the nationality. Look at Article three says, you gotta see how that writing is, listen.
Brother, Article three, indigenous people have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development.
You see what's happening? Article three, this is what Barack H. Obama was trying to get Farrakhan to read out loud. Barack H. Obama was trying to get Taj arabid to read this out loud. Barack H. Obama was trying to get anybody who claims to be a liberator of the people to read this out loud, and they didn't do it. Listen what Article three said. Indigenous people, well, who indigenous people? It must be particular Moroccans. Moroccans have the right to self-determination. By virtue of that right, so what's the right, what's the virtue of the right? The right is self-determination, but self-determination is based on what? The proper nationality? And then declare what? The proper territory. You're indigenous to what land? If you saying you're indigenous, it mean you standing already on your land. What's the name of the land? Morocco. Where the Moors keep saying the land is? They keep saying it's America, we in America. This is America. And all the surrounding islands is America. You see what they're doing? Who taught us this stuff? Who taught the Moors that we was Americans? Who did this to us? We need to start asking some questions. There's gonna be some indictments going on with all this propaganda going around here, cause it's undermining the Moors. This is an act of genocide. It's a crime against humanity to keep lying to Moors and telling them that they're Americans. American didn't come out, the word American didn't come out to the year fifteen oh seven, America vs. Fuji. The whole world knows this. But the Moors keep saying they're the Americans. Why San Watanji saying Noble Dr. Ali said we descendants of Moroccans? That's blood pedigree, that's origin, that's identity. But the Moors keep saying they're the Americans, while Sanwatez, he saying Nobudal Lee said we descendants of Moroccans, that's blood pedigree, that's origin, that's identity. Moish American is a connotative linguistic, is color of law, what does color mean? To conceal. What is the word Moish American concealing? The word Moroccan, which is the true nationality, that the United States is getting themselves all caught up. Knowing that they're breaching international law just coaches. They know they're breaching peremptory rights, they're still taking the risk to strike Article fifteen about Moroccan nationality and Moors over here saying they're Americans, and United States is putting themselves in harm's way to be criminals to strike your nationality Moroccan, and the Moish Americans, somebody keep telling them they're Americans. Okay, watch this. Right here in Article three, see right here, political? What does political status mean? What they already told you, it's all about your first, your particular what? Origin, Moroccan. So Moroccans get the status what? A political status of now being Moroccans of their political state, you see, political is tied to the word what? Self-determination is the self-determination of the Constitution that recognizes your nationality. Through your Declaration of Independence. You see how I'm getting all this just from a couple of articles? By virtue of that right, what right? Self-determination, but self-determination by establishing what? Your political status through a Constitution that recognizes your nationality, because it's particular. Article four, listen.
Article four, indigenous peoples in exercising their right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government in matters relating to their international and local affairs.
Internal.
Excuse me, inter- internal and local affairs, as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions.
You see what's happening? They moving their chess pieces in combination. First, you gotta have a proper nationality. Then you need self-determination of a state. Because by virtue of that right, the self-determination, now you can enforce your political status. And through your political status, Article four, we only had Article four, it says what? Moors, what type of Moors? Moroccans in exercising their right to self-determination, what's self-determination? The state. Have the right to autonomy, now you can be autonomous of self-government because you're self what? Governing, that's three parts of government. That's a constitution. That's a plebiscite, what's a plebiscite? Voting for your elected officials. So now you're self-governing because you got a constitution, three parts of government, in matters relating to their internal and local affairs. As well as ways and means for financing their autonomous functions, that's the first four articles. This is what Obama was trying to tell the Moors after two thousand nine, he signs this in twenty-ten, he said, you Moors need to go read the Charter. To find out about self-determination, to find out what the word indigenous means, it's about your Constitution. And read the Charter, now watch this, why, why don't I read those, read a little bit of that, okay, listen, watch this. The Moors know what this is. This is one of the ten or eleven letters. That was written by mayors. The Moors got all happy, uh, the mayor of Chicago, uh, wrote a declaration, a proclamation recognizing Moish Americans. And he said, the Moish Americans are indigenous to the land, this is, the Moors ran off all excited. You see, Moors don't read. They just skim. Read means to do what? Comprehend. To use some forensics. To look up words that you don't recognize. So Emmanuel, right, Ron Emmanuel. Mayor of Chicago in twenty-eleven. Writes the first pro- proclamation. To recognize Moors, but what about the Moors, was he trying to say? Keep in mind, Ron Emmanuel was working for who? Barack H. Obama. Now he becomes mayor, one year later, he becomes mayor in twenty-eleven, and he writes a letter to support who? Barack H. Obama. Ron Emmanuel knew what Obama was trying to do, trying to wake up the Moors to go back and read what? The Charter. Because the Charter is like a portal so you can learn more about the history of France versus United States of America. To learn the history about Resolution fifteen fourteen. To learn the history about what? The Declaration on Indigenous People. Listen, watch this. Watch how it reads. Okay, from the top, uh, brother Dre.
Officer, the mayor, city of Chicago, Ron Manuel, mayor, uh, the proclamation. Whereas the Moish Americans are the descendants of the ancient Moabites, Ammonites, and Canaanites who were permitted by the old pharaohs of Kebbit to traverse from East Africa and later form themselves kingdoms extending from the northwestern and southwestern shores of Africa. The Atlantic Islands onto the present-day continental Americas and. Whereas the indigenous Moish peoples of the Americas are now united in order to again link themselves with the family of nations and. Whereas the Moish Americans, being Aboriginal to the territories of North, Central, and South Americas, have formed a sovereign theocratic government guided by the command principles of love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice through virtue of the universal right to self-determination, as well as with the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples guaranteed in the Charter. And whereas on January eighth eighteen eighty-six, Noble Dua Lee was born in the state of North Carolina, destined to become the first patriot of his mentally enslaved Moish American people. In nineteen twelve, he was later anointed as Il Haj Sharif Abdullah Lee by the heads of Egypt and Holy City of Mecca to return to the United States as the last prophet and founding father of the newly arisen nation of Moish Americans. As a result of the Thirteenth Amendment, Moish people were emancipated from slavery in eighteen sixty-five. I there, I mean, excuse me, now therefore, I, Ron Manuel, mayor of the city of Chicago, do hereby proclaim January eighth through the fifteenth twenty-twelve to be Moish American Week in Chicago and urge all residents to recognize the events planned for this time dated this, this, uh, twenty-second day of December twenty-eleven.
Okay. So Ron Emmanuel is hanging out with Obama. Now he's the mayor. He knows Obama and went to Egypt to talk about colonialism for Moors. He knows Obama came back and signed the rights indigenous people, and the rights indigenous people right off the top says, go back and read the Charter. But when you read the rights indigenous people, the first four articles say, you must have a particular nationality, particular origin in order to enforce your rights as indigenous people. And once you understand your real nationality, then you can have what? Self-determination. Self-determination by what? Statehood. Right, now listen. Look, look at Ron Emmanuel, he's trying to send hints to the Moors without getting in trouble. Ron Emmanuel sending coded message so that he don't get in trouble. You gotta understand what's happening here. He says, whereas. The indigenous Moish peoples. You see, he didn't call you Moish Americans at first, you gotta catch what he did. The Moish indigenous people, right, indigenous Moish people. Right, because it's about peoples. But who are the people? The people are Moish, but Moish is an adjective, but the real nationality is what? More, more, Moroccan. So he know the Moish is an adjective that describes who? The Moroccan. So the Moroccan people, the indigenous Moroccan peoples, that's how international law says it. Peoples. You gotta catch what he did, he didn't call you Moish Americans at first. But he know he gotta play the political game. Because the Moish Americans, they wanna hear you say Moish American, so he gotta keep saying that, plus he know the feds is watching him. FBI is watching him. She said, okay, I better get back to this Moish American word after I say Moish peoples. Because the word peoples is very important where? Pause. Resolution fifteen fourteen. When you go down to Article one of Resolution fifteen fourteen. What is Article, I mean, yeah, what does Article one say, uh, good brother Dre, right here?
One, the subjuge, um, the subjection of peoples to alien subjugation, domination, and exploitation constitutes a denial of fundamental human rights, is contrary to the Charter of the United Nations, and is an impediment to the promotion of world peace and cooperation.
You see? Article two.
All peoples have the right to self-determination, by virtue of that right, they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development.
So it's all about what? The Charter of the United Nations, it's about who? Peoples. See that? Subjugation of peoples. Subjugation of peoples, this is very important words in international law. Okay, now you go back over to the letter. You gotta break this letter down, it's about the indigenous who? Indigenous peoples who are Moish, but Moish mean what? Moroccan, that's the true particular identity. So therefore, if you indigenous to the land and you're Moroccan, that means the land is what? Morocco. The land is named after the people, the people named after the land. How the hell you turn around and call yourself American if the land is Morocco? See how ridiculous this is? Being Ron Manuel trying to get your attention, now drop down here, he says what? Where is the Moish American, you see what he did now? See what he did right here, indigenous Moish people, now he dropped down, he says, Moish Americans, because he know you still naturalized. But now he gonna tell you how you can do what? Decolonize. Because remember Obama opened up his speech about colonialism. You gotta string these things together. So right here, it's whereas the Moish Americans who are still naturalized as Americans, but they're really Moroccan peoples. But down here, he says, whereas the Moish Americans who are naturalized as Americans, being aboriginal to the territories. That's what the rights indigenous people talking about, right? Gotta be origin of that territory. Being aboriginal to the territories of North, Central, and South Americas have formed a sovereign theocratic government, what's that mean? You operating like a church. So he's trying to tell you, uh, you're operating as a church. As Moish Americans. But if you start operating as indigenous peoples, look what he gonna say next. So you're guided by the command principles of love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice through virtue of the universal right to self-determination. He's saying, these Moors, you claiming your self-determination is through a sovereign theocratic government. But he already knew. That you need to do what? Declare your independence away from who? United States of America, return back to what? The territory of Morocco as Moroccans, that the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, say you shall return where? To Morocco. And he say return to some dang on temple? He said return to Morocco, right? And it's about your self-determination, listen. As well as with the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples guaranteed in the Charter. So Ron Emmanuel said, you Moors need to go read the Charter, because the Charter has guarantees in it. Because without the Charter, there is no Declaration of Rights and Districts People. So you gotta see what he was doing in this letter. He tried to support Barack H. Obama to try to get the Moors' attention, why? Okay. Wha- wha- why was it so special? He was the mayor of what? Chicago. All the Moors claimed that the Moors Science Temple, the first temple was in Chicago, Illinois. Now, obviously, they dispute about it, but. Even Ron Emmanuel is saying, okay, this, this temple, this whole temple theme with Nobudal Lee kinda started Chicago around nineteen thirteen, nineteen twenty-six, nineteen twenty-eight, there's a lot of stuff was going on. So he's trying to get the attention of these dang on Moish Americans, these grand sheiks. To go back and read the dang on Charter. About the rights indigenous people, did they do it? No. He tried to get Taj Reed Bay, who's a grand sheik, to go back and read the Charter. Did they do it? No. Now, in all fairness, Kujo Eo didn't start studying until two thousand eight, but that's alright, by the time you're twenty-eleven came around, Kujo had been studying, did Kujo go back and read the Charter, nightly call himself a grand sheik? No. No. But they love to talk about this letter, but how many of grand sheiks went back and read the Charter out loud to their members? None of them. All they worry about is the word that, that mayor said, Moish American, that's all they care about. Then the mayor turned around and, and qualified. What the Moish American is about, it's a theocratic government through a church, that's why it's a five oh one C three. What does the five oh one C represent? What's the C represent? Church, corporation. Not five oh one S as in state. It's five oh one C, church, listen. So Barack, Barack H. Obama and the mayor of Chicago is trying to get the Moors' attention to go back and read the Charter. Right? Why? So the Moors end up with this one day. What if this is a blank map of all these Moroccan states who now have what? Constitutions? Because now the Moors know that they're what? Such as Dimpsey, right? Dimpsey knows, these nationals here know they're what? Moroccans. And through their self-determination, they established a state. Now they have what? Self-determination, now they have a self-government. And then moving forward, they became parties to the Charter because they studying the Charter. They repolled all their properly written instruments with the Charter according to Article one oh two of the Charter with the Secretary. They followed all the instructions, they became secretarial powers of contracting parties or contracting state to all the Moors treaties. They enforced what? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, and returned to Morocco because it's their territory. They followed all these instructions that Barack H. Obama tried to get the Moors to do in twenty-ten. The, the Dimpsey Moors, the Moroccans here, following all the instructions that Ron Emmanuel from Chicago tried to get the Moors to do in twenty-eleven. You gotta see that, that we've been sold out. Listen, what, what is it that these grand sheiks are trying to stop? They're trying to stop this. They didn't wanna listen to Ron Emmanuel talk about the Charter. They didn't wanna listen to Obama talk about the Charter and colonialism. Why? You gotta understand, overseers have been put in place to stop the Moors from getting to this status right here. These seals represent states. This flag represents an empire. And they told all the Moors, no, you need to come through the temple in order to get your birth rights, that's BS. BS. Your birth rights come through a state, an organic state. Without Constitution, through self-determination, following the instructions of the Charter. This is Barack H. Obama trying to tell the Moors. Ron Emmanuel trying to tell the Moors. I'm sitting here trying to tell the Moors. And these foolish grand sheiks out here doing just the opposite. What else is happening? What else the United States and the grand sheiks are doing? You, did you hear what I just said? What the United States and the grand sheiks doing? They're trying to prohibit what? They're trying to prohibit this. I got up on the board. You see this? United States, this is their worst case scenario, this is their nightmare right here. Your grand sheiks knowingly or unknowingly were trying to prevent this from happening as well, because they told all the Moors, just be a, a nice citizen. You Moors just need to enforce the Constitution and be an American. Come under civil and criminal jurisdiction of America and be good, abiding citizens. The United States and the grand sheiks been selling the Moors out. This is what they've been trying to stop. Check it out. Now, this is a tier system. This is about the empire Morocco, the state, empire Morocco is the state. That's the sovereign parent external state, it's an empire. Right, says the external sovereign independent state, that's the state. And the, the empire Morocco, the Treaty of Act of the Sarahs recognizes what? A Sultan. The Sultan is what? Head of state. So the Sultan and Empire Morocco act as one. So you got the human being sitting in the chair representing the state itself, Empire Morocco, that's the state. The sovereign state, independent state. But it was void of a Sultan, right? It's been void of a Sultan since when? Nineteen fifty-six. Up until present day, where now what? January twenty twenty-four, there's still no Sultan. But this is what it But this is what it's gonna look like when we elect a Sultan. In order for us to bring the, the treaties into full power and effect, you must have a Sultan. You ain't never played chess without a king on the chessboard. The king represents the Sultan. Can't play chess without a king. Listen. Drop-down box. So the Sultan oversees this ecosystem. This is an ecosystem. Right? So underneath the Sultan, there's an executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch, right? Underneath the executive branch is the administration branch. You got a prime minister. The prime minister oversees the wiser council, right? So the executive branch have, has a leader, a head, prime minister. The prime minister oversees the wiser council. The wiser council is all the heads of state. All the Moroccan states and all the territories sit at one round table. And that round table has a speaker called the prime minister, you see? Overseen administrative reforms of the Empire Morocco. So it'll make sense to you. Listen. Then you also have the legislative branch. That's nothing but women sitting there as legislators with the pen. Right? So the legislative branch is the Speaker of the House. You have a head Speaker of the House. And the House will have what's called a Seiraha Council. That ain't nothing but all the Seirahas from each of the territories. Right now, we have seven recognized Seirahas, so there would be only seven Seirahas at the council for now. Until we keep growing. When we add eight, nine, ten, each Seiraha who's the Speaker of her House in her respective state. Such as Ampac has a Seiraha. When Ampac's Seiraha will then have to report to the council of the legislative branch of the Empire Morocco. And sit at this round table with other Seirahas. Okay? And then it would be one speaker who sits there as the head speaker on behalf of all the Seirahas sitting at that council. And then you're gonna have a judicial branch. Judicial branch will have a chief judge that sits at a round table with other associate judges. Who sit on panels, right? Associate judges. Okay, so you got three branches in the Empire Morocco. This will be almost like, you know how the United States oversees the several union states? Right? You got the federal government oversees the several union states. Well, this is how the Empire Morocco would be. The Empire Morocco, right, will have three branches of government, just like the United States. Right? And then it will oversee what? Then you have your lower states, the several Moroccan states. Now here, United States of Morocco. On behalf of the Empire Morocco, so you got the, such as Ampac. United States of Morocco, so Ampac, Ampad, right, listen. This is your United States. Of Morocco, these are United States. All these states are aligned, right, to have an alliance. As united, they're all united. As one. So united, U N I, that's unique, as one. They come together as an alliance. As United States of Morocco, because that's what they are, the United States, right? So United States of Morocco, which is all the several Moroccan states throughout the Empire Morocco. Will operate on behalf of the Empire Morocco. You see that? So what happens is this, going back to the map. As an example, Dempti. Dempti oversees Texas. This is part of the United States of Morocco, and they will then start to govern over this territory on behalf of the Empire Morocco. So Empire Morocco is your higher government that now does what? Grants powers to Dempti. So Dempti can take care of this territory based upon these borders. So Dempti will have their own three branches of government. Govern over the affairs of this territory and have their own constable court to take care of the affairs of this territory. You see? So, going back to the. Illustration. So United States of Morocco will operate on behalf of the Empire Morocco. Alright, listen. So over here to the right. That's what? That's the United States. On behalf of the United States of America, listen. So down here, you got the United States on behalf of the United States of America. Who is this? See, that's the United States and several union states. But they come under the jurisdiction of who? They come under the jurisdiction. Of both the Empire Morocco, which is the state, the external sovereign state. And also the United States and the several union states, let's say Texas. Will come under the jurisdiction. Of one of the several Moroccan states such as Dempti, listen. Right? So Dempti, right, I'd take Texas, that's their seal, right? Oversees this territory. And they would oversee, because keep in mind, this is in layers. So in this layer, you have Empire Morocco, right? Empire Morocco and the three branches of government, that's number two. Will be number three. Then it will be Dempti. Right? As a government, United States of America be number four in jurisdiction. I'm talking layers. Who would be number five? Texas. I'm talking layers of jurisdiction. Who would be number six? All of their counties. Such as, uh, Houston, right? You got Houston, Dallas, et cetera. Right? You got cities, you got counties. Right? In Texas, they got a county called Ellis County. So therefore, from a jurisdiction perspective, right, we're talking layers, it would be Empire Morocco and its government. Overseen what? Dempti as a Moroccan state government. Just overseeing a fully posited jurisdiction. But then Dempti will have jurisdiction of who? United States of America, United States, Texas, and all the Texas counties. And cities, you see? And this is what? United States of America. This is what the United States of America have been trying to stop the Moors from being achieved. Which is self-government. Self-determination. The enforcement of your treaty rights. The enforcement of your Moroccan laws. The enforcement of your Moroccan regulations. As Moroccan nationals. And the United States, the United States of America, the several union states. And in my opinion, the grand sheiks. All these heads of the NAACP, HBCUs. The ministers of these mosques. It's a lot of people that's been trying to stop the Moors from achieving. This particular goal right here. This is gonna happen soon. We already, this level right here, we already got the United States of Mo- Morocco already going. We got seven states and county. We've already established the wiser regional council. We're already starting to govern over the United States of America, the United States and the several union states. The only thing we missing now is establish the Empire Morocco to have a sitting Sultan. Then we have three branches of government that oversees the entire empire. But yet you still need Moors to oversee small parcels of lands such as Dempti, Ampac, Ampad, New Mecca. Right? Ampam, right? Maru, Serum, et cetera. These are all acronyms for Moroccan states, right? These are all acronyms. For these states in growing, right? So, so as I start to close out. You, you gotta understand, Moors. That the International Court of Justice. Already knows that this is what the Moors should be trying to achieve. Because in the case, as we read tonight, the ICJ said, this is a, this is an unavoidable consequence. On how the twelve signatory powers, including the Sultan at the time, did not wake up the Moors. For the Moors to be what? The sovereign authority over the Moors government and the sovereign authority over the entire Empire Morocco. So in nineteen fifty-two, the ICJ awards the United States a limited jurisdiction over what? Constable Court. Four years later, nineteen fifty-six, now, they wanna get rid of Constable Court, because nineteen fifty-six, a whole lot of shenanigans is going on. You fast forward to nineteen fifty-eight, and all of a sudden Mohammed the Fifth wants to strike Article fifteen. Why would Mohammed the Fifth give a damn about Article fifteen, since Mohammed the Fifth was saying he's Moroccan? Why wouldn't he need to strike Article fifteen and say, ain't no such thing as Moroccans? Oh, he trying to say the Moors are no longer Moroccans. You see what's happening? Then the United States accepts this in nineteen fifty-nine. The United States says, yeah, we'll accept your notion, your note to say. The Moors aren't Moroccans no more. Why? Because they trying to rush it. Because the Resolution fifteen fourteen was coming out in nineteen sixty about decolonization. So you gotta see what's happening. Now Morocco, Barack H. Obama gotta come out. And say, man, these Moors is still selling out. Let me try to help the Moors. I'm gonna go to Cairo, Egypt, and two thousand nine, in his first presidency, he had just got the Nobel Peace Prize. He doing tours all through Europe, doing all kind of speeches. Why didn't they give Barack H. Obama the Nobel Peace, Peace Prize less than one hundred days into his presidency? He didn't have no legacy. Because Barack H. Obama had to power the pen. He could do a lot with his proclamations as president. He could deal with public law eight fifty-six. He could turn around and help the Moors. So they want to make him a one-term president. So they, so all the European states said, man, let's get his dude the Nobel Peace Prize and tell him to chill out. So as soon as he gets the Nobel Peace Prize, he runs right over to Cairo, Egypt. And his first, in the first couple of minutes, he starts talking about colonialism with these Moors. And after that, he leaves Cairo, Egypt, runs over and signs the rights indigenous people in twenty-ten, because George Bush didn't want to sign them in two thousand seven. And the rights indigenous people are giving you a roadmap back to the Charter. And the Charter in Article seventy-three talks about non-self-governing territories. And Barack H. Obama and Ronald Manuel is trying to get the Moors, who call themselves Moors. To go back and read the Charter, read the reforms of the Charter, read the resolutions of the United Nations. Go back and look at the International Court of Justice, France versus United States of America, and see what you're supposed to be doing. To enforce your sovereign rights as Moors. But instead, it took until what? As I start to close out. I start to close out. I got a timeline up here, ninety-five years. Since nineteen thirty, all the way over to twenty twenty-four, ninety-five years. No, we transitioned in nineteen twenty-nine. So it says nineteen thirty. Look at, look what's happening. The Charter comes out in nineteen forty-five. France versus United States of America comes out in nineteen fifty-two. Nineteen fifty-six, all kind of shenanigans happened. Mohammed the Fifth gets his independence. France signs an agreement to terminate the Treaty of Fairs. Now the Sultan has to become a king. Now it becomes a member state in nineteen fifty-six, November. But during that same time, the United States of America, and that's public law eight fifty-six, which is August first. Eight, nineteen fifty-six, I mean. Then all of a sudden, they send a memo, the United States sends a memo over to Kingdom Morocco, says, yeah, we gonna close Constable Court. And we gonna turn these Moors into Americans. You got a problem with that, King Morocco? No. How I know that King Morocco didn't have a problem with it? Okay, fast forward, nineteen fifty-eight. Now the King Morocco sends a dang on note over the United States, say, yeah, we'd like to strike Article fifteen from the Treaty of Madrid. That does what? Tries to close the portal to keep the Moors from returning to Morocco. What about Morocco, the Empire Morocco? That way, the Moors can't get back into governing as a sovereign authority of the Moors Empire. So the United States accepts that notion nineteen fifty-nine. So what happens in nineteen sixty? Resolution fifteen fourteen comes out and gives the Moors a right to decolonize. And what happens? All throughout the sixties, the FBI is killing everybody. Trying to stop the national, nationalist movement. Because Africa, all throughout the sixties, was gaining their independence. So now all of a sudden, they assassinate who? John F. Kennedy, nineteen sixty-three. Now they assassinate who? Your brother Malcolm X, Il- El, uh, uh, Malcolm X, your brother, uh, Il Malik. Nineteen sixty-five, because Il Malik was hanging out from nineteen sixty to nineteen sixty-five at the UN and hanging out with the African states. Your brother Il Malik was hanging out in France, United Nations. He was hanging out, uh, uh, the United Kingdom, and he went to Cuba to see Castro. Castro asked your brother to come over to Ca- to Cuba. Next, now he gets assassinated nineteen sixty-five. Then all of a sudden, who's running for office in nineteen sixty-eight? Robert Kennedy. He gets assassinated. But who gets assassinated first? Martin Luther King. They got assassinated within sixty days of each other, nineteen sixty-eight. All this assassination going on in the sixties, why? Because the Africans was declaring their independence, because they were using what? The Charter of nineteen forty-five and Resolution fifteen fourteen. So now you fast forward, the Moors ain't doing nothing this whole time. They reading Korans and Circle Sevens and talking about divine international movement. I ain't seen no movement. The only movement I saw was right here, nineteen ninety-five, Farrakhan does a million man march. What came out of it? Nothing. Why? Because Farrakhan, you ain't read the rights indigenous people. You gotta tell the Moors they ain't black. You gotta tell the Moors according to rights indigenous people, they gotta be a particular nationality in order to call yourself indigenous. So after nineteen ninety-five, Farrakhan gets one million brothers and sisters who ready for liberation, ready for independence. And guess what? He goes crickets on them after that. He got his money and he's out. And everybody still think they black. So you fast forward from nineteen ninety-five, right, all the way up to now, what? When, when did the Moors finally get their act together? Year twenty twenty-one. February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, Ampac signed their constitution. Finally starting to invoke the rights of Moors. All because good brother Barack H. Obama, in the year two thousand nine. Went to Cairo, Egypt to talk about Moors treaties of the Treaty of Tripoli of seventeen ninety-six, Article eleven. Talk about Moors who colonized. And then all of a sudden, nine, two thousand nine, he goes now, twenty-ten, signs the rights indigenous people, Moors didn't do nothing. To go back and read the Charter, find out we supposed to do what? Declare independence and draft constitutions according to Article seventy-three of the Charter. Article seventy-three, section E, Constitution may require. So now, since twenty twenty-one, now we formed seven states. We're well on our way. So I wanna say thank you to good brother Barack H. Obama. And good brother Emmanuel, Ronald Emmanuel, because they, they tried. Barack H. Obama wasn't gonna put all his political willpower on the table for a bunch of sellouts. But he did enough. I went back to research, research to see exactly what's going on. Barack H. Obama tried to help the Moors. But the Moors are being sold out by Moors. So what do we take away from this today? We gotta start reading the Charter and understand. That the ICJ is trying to help the Moors. And they felt as though it was an unavoidable consequence in nineteen fifty-two. To let the colonists still maintain jurisdiction over the Moors, but the Moors hadn't woke up on their own. The Moors themselves acquiesced. The Moroccan government acquiesced. But now, we're no longer acquiescing, we're no longer consenting since twenty twenty-one, all the way through twen- twenty twenty-four. Now we will start to put together the government again. Right? These are what you call re-establishing and re-merging. Your proper political status. In order for you to have impersonum jurisdiction, which is personal jurisdiction. And territorial jurisdiction protections, you need your own government. And that's what we gotta take away from today's class and all the classes we've been looking at regarding France versus United States of America. Now, we're gonna keep reading it, because we don't get into taxes and all that stuff. I know Moors like to talk about taxes. But you gotta understand something. We'll never collect taxes if we don't first read the dang on Charter. I am with that. Islam. Islam.